Mayor Lovely Warren, Councilmember LaShay Harris, Councilmember Malik Evans. And we are supported by BJ Scanlon, our Chief of Staff, Joseanne Reeves from the Affairs Office, and Katie Hestewand, who also has staff support. If I'm not able to identify, Councilmember Evans, I didn't miss you, did I? Well, Councilmember Evans, just in case I missed him. I'm not able to identify those who are joining us from the Police Department. So Chief or Mayor, if somebody would let us know who we have.
I'll introduce everybody. It's Chief of Staff Lieutenant Tom Shaw, Deputy Chief Mark Simmons of Administration, Commander Fabio Rivera of Patrol Division, Deputy Chief Joe Morabito, myself, and Deputy Chief Mark Mura of the Community Affairs Bureau.
Okay, thank you so much for being here. I want to just remind people, we have a little less than an hour for our briefing, because we do have Council Committee meetings at 4:00 today. So we will have to be efficient with our time. We have outstanding questions from last, from our last meeting, but there are a number of items we wanted to go over today. We also wanted to spend a brief moment talking about the transition, at least an overview of the transition from the Police Department. Our primary purpose is to talk about the state of our community, given the heightened level of tensions with the protests and how those are being handled. So that's our questions. If you would start though, by giving us an assessment of last night's activity, and then we'll go back to the outstanding questions.
Sure. Council President, before I start, I just want to clear something up. Yesterday, there was conversation about, you know, us not being present at the hearing. We were prepared to do and be here Tuesday, but we heard that it was adjourned. And then Tuesday night, I received an email stating that, for the mayor, saying, "Do you have any questions to answer from, I think, you all, council?" And the mayor stated that she would go on the call and answer the questions. And I told council that it was my understanding that I will be answering these questions, that you are nor the command staff will be in attendance. So I know the mayor cleared that up yesterday. So I just wanted to make sure that that was confirmation. Last night's protests, we had about, you know, 400 people. It was peaceful. They came to the Public Safety Building. They did, you know, chant outside. They did breach the barriers, the two barricades that were in front of the Public Safety Building. We did have some elders that were assisting. They assisted greatly. They did some great work in calming the crowd. We did have our personnel outside that stood in formation. But there were no issues with respect to any, you know, pepper ball or arrests last night.
But there was no the presence of the dogs.
Correct. That is the State Police. Those are State Police dogs. RPD had no dogs present.
But they're invited, right? The State Police are invited?
Correct. The State Police are invited here to assist us.
Did we invite their dogs?
That's part of the State Police training package. That's part of their formation. So I have no control over the State Police with respect to how they train or how they deploy. But what I can tell you is that RPD did not have any dogs present.
Councilmember Gruber.
Chief Singletary, thank you for letting us know about the way that works. Who can we talk to to ask the State Police to stop bringing dogs? The dogs are incredibly triggering, considering this nation's actually quite recent history. What can we do to prevent the dogs from being there?
So just to interrupt for a moment and bring council up to speed on something, I did have a chance to, after speaking with the chief several times about the dogs and getting a clear understanding of it being a State Police department or their initiative, I did speak to the governor's office today. And they had assured me that they would be talking to the State Police about the dogs. So I did make a call to the governor's office, or they called me to just check on things in Rochester. And we talked specifically about the State Police dogs and asked them not to have them here, that we appreciated their assistance, but the dogs were very triggering. And they agreed to make calls and to speak to their teams about the dogs.
Thank you. Councilmember Lupin.
Yeah, I have a question. In terms of inviting the State Police for assistance, after four nights of peaceful protesting, do we still need to ask them for assistance? Or can we handle this?
Well, for us, it's kind of hard to plan without knowing how many people we're going to receive in the protest. That is the reason why we ask the State Police for assistance. You know, we have sometimes upwards of 2,000 or 2,500 people that are part of the protest. And with the resources that we have here, we need the assistance of the State Police and the Marin County Sheriff's Office, because we do not know how many people we are going to have to plan for. Last night-
So is it just numbers?
Sorry. Last night, we had approximately 400 to about 500 people that were there. So yeah, it's a lot of it is numbers and not knowing what to expect and prepare for.
Vice President Lightfoot.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor, and Chief and your staff. My question is really concerned around cost. What has been the cost? Overtime cost and the cost associated with these protests and resources provided these activities over the last few days, sir?
Yeah, so a lot of our time has been focused on the planning for the protest and not as much on the administrative aspect of it. Not to say that we have lost sight of the fact that this costs and we have to be mindful of our budget. But I was on the phone earlier with City Budget Director Chris Waggoner, and we were having a discussion about costs. And we are now working on preliminarily on determining how much we have spent so far and ways to budget moving forward. So I don't have a number-
Okay. But that's coming to us soon, hopefully.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Actually, I just want to add that as it pertains to getting assistance from the Sheriff's Department and from the State Police, we still have a city that we have to respond to that is calling 911. And so we only have a certain amount of officers that are on shift at a special, at a specific period of time. And so we have to get assistance from other departments and other entities, because we still need people to respond to those people that are calling 911 for assistance in the city. And so we don't just have a protest going on. We have a number of other things that are going on as well that our police officers have to respond to that's happening in our neighborhoods. And so we want to make sure that we, that everyone that is exercising their rights in the city and those citizens that we have are getting the assistance that they need when they're calling 911 as well.
Vice President, if I would add-
I understand that. Thanks for that. I just wanted to add-
Go ahead, Chief.
If I would also add that, you know, as a result, most of our officers on certain shifts have been working 12 to 16 hours beyond their shift. So they work an eight-hour shift. They've been holding over probably additional eight hours to 10 hours, sometimes 12.
And based follow-up of Madam President-
Councilmember Lupin. Councilmember-
That was going to be, that was going to be my, the point that I brought up is that, you know, aren't we also having our staff from RPD doing lots of overtime? And so I was just wondering, what percentage of police are on regular duty responding to 911 calls versus being deployed to these protests?
We're not adversely impacting our numbers to handle the sections. We're actually holding over the shifts that are working or bringing in supplemental officers and resources. Some are in specialty units. That's why they come. They would be there anyway. And then we backfill them if we need to. And then, like I said, we're holding over. So the normal number of officers that are working the street to handle our everyday calls for service are out there in the city while we're dealing with this larger protest issue.
Vice President Lightfoot.
Thank you, Madam President. Chief, what, a while ago, we had a briefing on overtime and the matrix that was shown to us, the different categories. What category would this particular event fall into?
This category falls under project.
Okay.
And Councilmember, just go a little further in that. It's a combination. So primarily for the people who are called into the protest who weren't scheduled to work that day or fall under project. But for those officers, as the chief explained, who may have worked from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. and are held over, then that will fall under completing assignment or being held over. So it's a combination of both of those things.
Okay, thank you.
So we can go to the outstanding questions now that you all are here and will be able to answer them, I'd imagine. BJ, if you want to read those?
I do, certainly. The first question is, was directed to the mayor by President Scott. And it was, what is your ability to issue directives? For example, name covering of officers' badges? Do you have the ability to direct the officers not do this as their public employees? And the intent was to reach out to Corporation Counsel.
Yes, Corporation Counsel is researching that question right now. They want to make sure that they can not only review the state law, but also case law. So it's going to take a little while to give you a correct answer on that. And so we want to make sure that we provide you a comprehensive answer. So I don't have an answer for you today, but I'll have one for you as soon as possible. Additionally, the HR department is working on the other question about the changes and the shifting around of people in the Police Department. I know the chief may be able to speak a little bit to that. But I did speak to the HR director this morning, who is in the process of preparing a document that's council can review.
Would you request, please, with the work that Corporation Counsel or the Law Department is doing about this subject, to also find out the extent of our ability to enact laws to impact that issue? In other words, they find it out and we don't like it and we want to change it. Do we, as a legislative body, have the authority to make changes to that specific item?
And President Scott?
The issue of contention, and I think that there's something in state law regarding safety of public officers or something of that nature. And that is when there is a belief that an officer or their family may be harmed, that they can, you know, do what they're doing in order to protect their safety as a public servant. That was the preliminary information that I received. And I'm not sure, because state law supersedes city law, right? So if city council was to pass a law or ordinance that said that officers could not in fact cover their name badges, they could not do that, then we will want to make sure that state law doesn't supersede. The chief, and I don't know if he has the answer to this, but that is where we're trying to get the best answer and information possible. And I don't want to give you something that isn't accurate. So give us time to do some research on that, to look at case law, to look at if this has happened before somewhere else and somebody's challenged it in a union. So there's a number of different things that we have to look at as far as directives and process that we need to go through before we're able to give you an accurate answer.
Can I just add-
Councilmember Gruber, followed by Councilmember Lupin.
Yeah, thank you, President Scott. Thank you, Mayor. That, I understand there's probably a lot of legal-
I'm sorry. I can't hear you. Councilmember Gruber, or some, if somebody has, something is going on in the background.
I think, Chief Singletary, I think that's your phone. Would you be able to mute yourself for just a second? Thank you, Chief. Mayor, I would just ask if Corporation Counsel can also just delineate two different things. One is covering up names, because I think that's what we've heard thus far is about the safety of the officers covering up names. But the other is covering up badge numbers. Because of course, if we actually want to be able to identify who is potentially acting not within policy, there needs to be some way to be able to identify them even on film. And I think we've seen both names and badge numbers covered. And I just want to make sure we delineate those two requests.
I definitely understand your concern, Councilmember Gruber. So when we look at body worn camera video or if council was to ask for the body worn camera video, each of our officers have a body worn camera that is assigned to them. And they, so when they dock it, that information is locked in based on their numbers. So we would be able to identify that through the body worn camera video. I think that if, I don't, I believe that if a officer is, you know, asked to give his information or to give his name or to give his badge number, I don't believe that they are precluded by any law from giving that publicly. So I think that we have to be, you know, this is a gray territory that we're walking in. And I want to make sure that before I give council an answer, that I understand what the law is completely based on the fact that body worn cameras are something that's new to, and the law hasn't necessarily caught up to it. So it might be a situation where we have case law that is not necessarily in the state statute yet. So I want to make sure that we are able to give you a comprehensive answer on that.
Totally understood. Just for what it's worth, I was not referring to body cams out there in the community. I'm talking about at the protests themselves. That if a officer who is, you know, because we were talking yesterday or in the chief's answers about being able to review some of the footage of when the pepper balls were shot and things of that nature. I just want to make sure that we get an understanding of what actually is kosher in terms of covering up names versus covering up badges. I understand badge numbers. I understand you don't have the answer to that now. I just want that added to the research that Corporation Counsel does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lupin.
Yeah, so I wanted to clarify. So, you know, there was a certain constituent who had been emailing several times over the last couple of months and calling about quote-unquote mourning bands, which is what we were told the covering of the names was about. And so I'm really, I'm confused as to why now it's about the safety of the officers. If we were told previously it was about mourning a fallen officer. Can you clear that up for me?
So I think that what we talked about is that there was a black band that many officers was wearing over the loss of their fallen officer. And so then it became that when this specific question was asked to the police chief, they talked about that. So, you know, some people are covering it because of their mourning of specific black band. But there is a situation where some officers may be covering it because of the fact that they have lost, because of the fact that they have been given the go-ahead by the police chief to actually cover it. But the chief would have to answer that question. I think that him and his team are there to answer the question.
Chief.
Okay, we just got back inside, back in the call. What was the question?
My question was, previously we've been told that the covering of the name was about, was called a mourning band and was more about mourning a fallen officer. So wondering why now it's, I'm being told that, you know, we're being told that it's about officer safety.
Yes. So the reason it's about officer safety at this point, for the past couple of months, dating back to even after May, you know, officers' names have been researched by protesters to put personal information of the officers to the public, putting the safety of their families in jeopardy. Officers have been allowed to remove their name tags or cover them up on their vests to prevent the personal information from being spread on social media. We've had conversations with other law enforcement entities across the country. This is a practice. It's not to try to cover up or hide anything. It is just for officer safety at this point. We have officers in our department who have received threats, who have had their families clawed as well as had their homes taken as a result. And I think Joe Morabito wants to comment on some of the things as well.
Yeah, just to echo what the chief said there. We literally had our officers online with their name tags and the person standing in front of them would actually Google their name and actually called family members of the officer standing on the line while we were actually working with the protester in front of us, making, let's just say, non-flattering comments to the family, parents of the officer standing there. We've also had, our officers have gotten direct threats and a bounty on some of their heads based on this. We had another officer standing there where the person in front of them saw their name, found their address while standing there, and showed it to the officer and said, "We're going to be coming by your house. I know where you live." It's straight up an officer safety situation. I actually approved them covering their name tags. There are some alternatives potentially to that. We just, in the middle of it, it's pretty hard to do an alternative to that. You know, if we identify officers with a number. I can assure you, it's nothing to be non-transparent from. This is all about, we're willing to be transparent and provide names. But I'm certainly not allowing my officers' names to be out there when they're going to be the focus of a threat or, and/or their family. We need to keep in mind here that all these officers have families and their families are home worried about the officers out there too. And it makes it very difficult if they're getting phone calls while their officers are standing in line with folks in front of them that potentially mean them harm.
I understand that and, you know, can sympathize. But I, you know, following Councilmember Gruber's comment, if that's the case, we absolutely need to be able to identify officers. And they should not be allowed to cover both their name and their badge ID. But I also just want to highlight, you know, the constituent that's been emailing and calling about mourning bands was told within the last, you know, since May, that this was about mourning a fallen officer. So just in the interest of transparency, I can assume that he would feel maybe lied to about that response.
So I can answer as well. There's two different things here we're talking about. Mourning bands go over the officer's badge. That is an honor of a fallen officer. That's a sacred thing within law enforcement. That badge, that mourning band going over their badge does not cover their name tag. We have more than one form of identification on the officers all the time. These protests, in the instance I described, is a different situation.
Okay, so the mourning band goes over the badge number?
They don't wear mourning bands. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Let me finish, please. They don't wear mourning bands, right? At the, during these deployments and when they're standing in line. They only wear mourning bands on their badges when we're actually mourning a fallen officer. So they'll have two forms of identification on them. They'll have their name tag and they'll also have a badge.
Okay, so I think the confusion is maybe around which form of identification is getting covered. But now that we don't have the name badge to rely on, you know, the covering of the officer's ID number becomes more of an issue, I would imagine. Thank you for answering my question.
Okay, thank you. So our next, the next question.
The second question was, in what instances are you, as mayor, able to issue an order over the chain of command or issue directives? And I imagine that's the same response, Mayor.
Yes, that's something that is being researched. I do believe that based on the public officer's law and as to reason why, you know, that the police chief is the person that's the one that gives directives. In certain instances, especially with these protests, when they've gotten out of hand, I have received numerous calls. I call the chief. I ask certain things to happen or to, you know, back down on certain things. And I think that on Sunday, the connection with having the elders there and since then, having the protests be peaceful has been a combination of my office working directly with the chief, working directly with community members and elders to really keep that peace. I knew, I do know that on Saturday, there was a number of things that, you know, councilmembers tried to do. But on Sunday, being able to sit with Pastor Myra and come up with this plan, I think that this is, has been one of the ways that we've been able to keep the peace. And I'm thankful that we were able to work together with our community in order to do that. And Chief, I don't know if there is something that you want to add to that.
I think the mayor hit it on the head. I'm the police chief. I report to the mayor. The mayor and I are in constant conversation with regard to operations. And, you know, again, I report to the mayor.
So it looks like the answer to two and three are basically the same thing, right? Or are we on three?
Three read, can the mayor talk about her involvement in directing the RPD response? The second night, the elders came into the picture. There was a more subdued response. And I believe that the reason that the protest was much more peaceful the previous nights were more confrontational. And it seems to waver back and forth. And that was asked by Councilmember Lupin.
So I think your response addressed that just now, Mayor.
Yes.
Could I make a, could I clarify?[1545.84] Could I make a, could I clarify? Has there ever been a time where you chief haven't followed an order that the mayor has given?
Has there been a time that I followed an order that the mayor has given?
That you have not?
No. Uh, when the mayor asks me to do something, you know, I, I do it. Sometimes we may disagree on certain things, and we can come some, I'm sorry, come to some sort of, uh, happy medium, uh, but no, the, the mayor, I report to the mayor again.
And I'm thankful that, I'm thankful that when I've spoken to the chief about the aggressive tactics and ways to, that I believe that we can tamper down and be supportive to our community, that he has, he and his team, even though, you know, he may not have agreed with me at the moment, have really taken that step back and allowed us to work with our community to, um, direct this, uh, you know, some of this, these challenges that we have at this point in time. And so, working with Pastor Myra and, um, you know, many of the elders in the community since Sunday, we have been able to have peaceful protests, and, um, I pray and continue to work with community members to make sure that we are, uh, have people out there being in support of the protesters, um, and, and their right to assemble, but also making sure that everyone is safe.
Next question, uh, was from Councilmember Evans, and it said, uh, is there a transition document or plan that can be shared with the council, uh, so that we understand what will happen after September 29th? And with the structure of the department? The question, uh, is from Councilmember Evans, and it asks if there's a transition document that we're able to share with the council, or any updates or briefs about, uh, the structure of the department going forward and its transition?
I have not had any conversation with the mayor about that.
So the city council president and I, and vice president, had a meeting yesterday about transition, and, um, we are looking to wait until we are able to do a interim, um, and then we'll figure out what the steps are going forward. My suggestion at this time is that we do an interim, um, until after, uh, June of 2021. Um, I would hate to do a national search to pay for a lot of money, uh, to do a national search for someone that would, um, come in, and I don't think that we would get a, a person that would come at this point in time. So we are looking, I am looking at, um, an interim, and in the process of, um, securing an intern person right now, and then, uh, once that person is identified, they will work with the chief, um, the outgoing chief, in order to prepare and get that information.
With, with, with the, uh, Madam President?
Councilmember Evans?
Quick follow-up, please. And, um, in terms of, um, command staff is with, um, and you may not know this today, but just a question, uh, if you don't know the answer, we, I can wait. Would, uh, command staff be before the interim, or would the interim then help build the command staff? I'm just wondering, post 9/29?
So, uh, so the hope is that we would be able to identify an interim prior to 9/29, and that person would be able to connect with the current chief and his command team in order to get that transition going. Um, so I am, uh, so that, that's the, the plan.
Thank you. The next question.
Next question is, uh, from Councilmember Gruber, and it is, since Wednesday, there have been seven nights of protests. The explanation for the use of force the first couple of nights was the need to defend the public safety building. There has continued to be a defense of the public safety building without too many people on the streets, and without the use of pepper guns deployed, which has allowed a maintenance of peace. Do you have a sense of what would have to occur in order for there to no longer be a continuity of peace? What actions would have to occur that would trigger the use of pepper balls or tear gas?
I, I think what we have tried to do is allow people to peacefully protest. What has happened, uh, has been the protesters' actions that solicit a response from RPD. If incendiary devices are thrown, rocks and bottles are thrown, there has been a response from the RPD. Um, the last couple of nights have been peaceful because there hasn't been that activity. Uh, they did, you know, push past the gates last night, uh, we remained steadfast in a lineup formation, and there was no activity whatsoever. Um, but a couple of those nights that you were talking about, there were incendiary devices that were thrown at police officers. Police officers have to protect themselves, I can't have officers stand in a line and face any type of injury as a result of objects that are being thrown at them. So, the answer to that, that ought to happen, agitators in the crowd need not to throw things or incendiary devices at the police, to rocks, bottles, and the like. And we have a couple of pictures, uh, that we can send over, or we can display right now, from individuals that we have confiscated and or arrested, and we have found, we have seen Molotov cocktails, um, can, can we share those pictures?
Hey, hey Chief, can I, can I ask a, a, a kinda different way of framing my question?
Yes.
While you guys, photos you want? So, I was down there on, um, on Saturday night, and when, when the protests walked from Jefferson and McCree down to just around the, the, uh, War Memorial, the Blue Cross Arena, there was, uh, barricades, and there were, it, it looked to me like probably a hundred plus. Okay, can you still hear me?
Yes.
So on Saturday night, we, we were met with about a hundred plus, um, officers that were, um, you know, that had things like pepper gun, uh, pepper bullet, uh, bullets and the guns to deploy them, and the tear gas, um, at the ready. I was also there on Sunday and Monday nights, and, and a couple nights thereafter, and there were actually, at that point, only about six, maybe, maybe seven, eight, um, officers who were outside the public safety building, and were not carrying those, um, weapons, uh, and, or, or whatever we're gonna call them. And so, I, I guess part of what I'm trying to ask is, what changed the, the preparation for those two nights? Because the reality is that when the protesters come to a place where there's a hundred some odd officers wielding those pepper bullet guns, it is different than when they show up seeing six officers without them. I just wanna understand, I, I guess, I wanna understand what, what would change that to go, to going back to Saturday night, if anything? And more importantly, um, how do we ensure, what can council do to persuade you to maintain what it's been over the past three nights, which is a less imposing presence at the public safety building?
No, I think that what is, is the fact that on Sunday, we had community members that came together with, you know, me and Pastor Myra Brown came together and talked about a way that we can diffuse the situation instead of escalate, and where we can have people that are allies or that are elders in our community come out and understand that people are very, very upset about what happened, and they are, um, emotional, but that they would work with those that are protesting to say, "Let's not throw rocks, let's not throw bottles, let's not throw Molotov cocktails, let's not do that, let's," you know, and, and that has what, what, that is what has been happening. And, um, you know, that Sunday, we also had a, a meeting with the chief and his command team, who agreed that they would, you know, hold back, and, you know, um, so that's what happened between Saturday and Sunday, it was coming together, the community, myself, uh, coming together, um, and speaking directly to the police department about the tactics that were used on Friday and Saturday night, and, um, stepping up, and we are thankful that our elders have been there, they have been there night after night, also very thankful that Dr. Seifis Archie and members, um, of the community, uh, well, of our team at City Hall, have been out there as well, um, encouraging and asking people and, and calming people down when certain things happen. Um, so I believe that that is the difference here, and I'm thankful that we have people in our community that are willing to work with us, to work hand in hand, for people to have the ability to express themselves, but also so that everyone can be, uh, safe, and that they can express themselves in a way that is, uh, safe, and our officers can be as safe as well.
Uh, Councilmember Lupian?
Yes, I, I really wanna talk about the, the response, because, you know, for me, it's very clear that from the very beginning, um, the, the energy was amped up by the immediate response, the, the immediate severe and militaristic response of the police, you know, from the very beginning, when there were twenty pro, twenty people across the street weren't even protesting, they were just concerned for the, the well-being of the, um, for the people, rock organizers who were arrested, along with some news media, there was an immediate massive response, you know, and I didn't even know anything was going on until I saw thirty cop cars streaming down State Street. And, you know, when, when you, uh, when I believe that the police department treats our, um, our own citizens as if they're the enemy, that it, it invites conflict. And I, I see the main difference, uh, between Saturday and Sunday, uh, is the, the de-escalation of the response. And, you know, Saturday, Saturday night, elected officials were out there, along with elders, along with pastors, um, along with many of vulnerable people in the front line unprotected, and, you know, both the mayor and you chief knew that we were there because I was texting you, uh, asking for us to not be shot, and that wasn't able to happen. Um, and I understand the difference, uh, in that, you know, we didn't have a conversation, we didn't sit down with you with Pastor Myra, um, but the crowd, you know, gets, it gets hard to control when there's that, that anticipation of them being violent. Um, and I have to say that the, the response of the police, um, has just really been, um, overly severe to the fact that, you know, officers are aiming at council members, as well as our, members of our community, and former elected officials have had their nose broken and had to have, uh, stitches put in their lip, and, you know, people were penned in at a church, just trying to leave and to get supplies, and I just, uh, you know, what, what defense do you have for the kind of, of, from the initial, from the very start, the kind of response that you have, uh, had in our community?
Well, I don't think the officers were directly aiming at council members, per se, intentionally, um, as you described, uh, but our, our response, again, as I stated, I think that night, there were certain conversations with members who were on the ground, uh, those in the community, that an incendiary device and rocks and bottles were taken, and we showed restraint. There were a couple of minutes that went by before we even did anything. Officers took rocks and bottles for a couple of minutes before that happened, and there were several conversations that were had that night with elected officials to indicate that the agitators in the crowd started that.
Uh, I think you're probably referring, you might be referring to a conversation that you and I had, um, and what I-
You had it with Deputy Chief Simmons, it wasn't me.
Sorry, with Deputy Chief Simmons. What I would say about that, um, ultimately, is that, uh, the, I, I, I personally could not, could not sit there on the phone with Deputy Chief Simmons and deny the fact that I saw a firework go from the, from the protests over to the RPD. But again, it's a matter of, of the proportion, the disproportionate response. Um, Councilmember Lupian and I were standing at least twenty, twenty-five feet away from where that happened, and twenty seconds of that happening were hit with, uh, pepper bullets and tear gas, and forget us, along with hundreds of other people, and it was twenty, twenty-five feet away. And so, you know, it leads to a whole number of questions that I have, including, uh, is, is one, I think you called it an incendiary object, is one incendiary object, uh, a license to then, um, uh, have everyone open fire on everyone? And number two, my understanding of the, uh, policy was, and, and, and that it meant that actually, uh, you, the use at the feet to try to move people away, uh, versus having people hit squarely in the body, and I, I'd like to comment on those two things, if you don't mind.
So, this is Deputy Chief Simmons, and, and since our conversation was brought up by you, I, I'll go a little further. Uh, that night, and you weren't the only person I talked to, and I let those council members, let their conscience speak to them about whether they wanna talk about their conversations with me, but to you, you personally told me, and forgive me if I'm paraphrasing it wrong, Chief, I was there, I saw the, the, the crowd, I saw the agitators throw things at your people, I, I saw them throw the fireworks, and yeah, you guys showed restraint, you guys showed restraint until people started throwing things at you.
Yeah, Deputy-
So, go for it, correct that.
Let, let me, let me clarify a couple of things, words that you just used, I would never call them agitators, and I would never say that you showed restraint. What I agreed with on the phone, and I will let my conscience speak, and I, and I, I trust you'll do the same, Deputy Chief, what I did agree to, what, what I agree, what I did agree with is that I did see a firework shot from the protesters prior to the shooting of tear gas and pepper bullets. I, I'm not gonna deny that, and I'd be surprised if Councilmember Lupian denied that. However, it's about the proportionality of the response. Again, it was twenty to twenty-five feet away from me and Councilmember Lupian, and within seconds, we were struck with pepper bullets and tear gas. So, the, I'm not asking a question about who started what, I'm not asking a question of how did, how did the, the things actually happen, we can look on camera and see all that, I suppose. I'm asking about de-escalation versus escalating, and why people are being hit in the body with, with pepper bullets and tear gas, and, and more importantly, why it's the entirety of the crowd when it was a single firework that was shot.
Can I just, just before you respond, Chief, um, you know, I wanted to clarify, firework is, is something that goes off in the sky, what was thrown was a sparkling device, and after the summer that we've had, we all know the difference, uh, it didn't pose a threat. But the night before, on Court Street, when there were two thousand people penned in and couldn't escape, the, the barrage of firing and tear gas was brought on by a single water bottle.
So, let me, let me respond to that really quickly. Number one, before anything was thrown at us, a number of, um, orders went out for people to disperse for quite a lot of time, gave people a chance to leave that didn't have intent of causing problems. And a sparkler is something that young children carry around the backyard to celebrate. These are incendiary devices, we had a captain that was out there on the line that had his face burned by this incendiary device that you're referring to as a sparkler. It's not a sparkler, it's dangerous. We have, many officers have been injured already, we have broken fingers, we have, I think, up to nine officers that have been injured. It's not just fun and games, it's people that are getting injured, they're real-life people. Um, to Councilmember Gruber's, um, comment, we're not, they don't direct the shots at people. You have to remember, they have shields out there and they have umbrellas, both of those cause deflections of the pepper balls. It, we have no idea where it goes once it deflects off of the shield or the umbrella. That's why we give the orders to anybody that doesn't wanna be there, should leave, because we know that the crowd is escalating and amping up, and we have to be able to protect our officers and the other citizens, that's the whole reason for the announcements. Yesterday, there was an announcement made by the elders and some of the folks in the crowd, and Dr. Archie, and quite frankly, the organizer across the street, who had anybody who wasn't with a shield or an umbrella to back up across the street. The video's very clear on that, they moved in synchronized movements. There's dynamics there, it's not just clear-cut peaceful protesters. We have every single night that have been pretty peaceful, there's always been one or two incidents that weren't peaceful. So it's not entirely peaceful, and our, our responses have been initiated by something coming to us. If you take an example, Jeff and Samuel McCree Way, when they gather there every night, have you had one incident there? No, because people are there protesting peacefully. Every time they march, has there been an incident? No, because they're peaceful. As long as they're peaceful and they stand outside, we have covered it. We've been covering for about three months now, MLK Park, for peaceful protests, there's been not one problem there. So the, the difference is, and it's very evident, that if there's an issue brought to us, we have to respond to protect ourselves and the public. If they're peaceful, we let them, we stay out there all night, we stand, we look at them, and we listen to the stuff they say to us, that's what we've been doing. There comes a point in time where we have to protect the officers, and I, and unfortunately, we're not getting the backing from council, and it's very sad.
And, and I disagree with your point, Councilman Gruber, that we're not here to talk about who escalated things, because for weeks now, members of this council have been talking to the media, saying, "The police are initiating the violence, the police are instigating this, the police are the cause of this." So to just gloss over it is incorrect and is unfair to those officers out in the line. So I think you owe those officers an apology.
Okay, I, well, I'm here-
You're already, that's just demoralized, you already have police departments demoralized, and the sooner you get behind the officers, the quicker we will get control of the city, and you'll have a good police department. If it wasn't obvious what happened just recently with your whole entire command staff, something's missing, you need to pay attention to what's going on.
President? I was, I was just, I was just asked personally by someone to apologize, so President Scott, before, before you hand it to someone else, I just wanna say, this is, this is a, a briefing, this is not an opportunity for, uh, either of us to be asking for apologies to each other. What I'm trying to understand is how the proportionality of the response was made. And again, I will reiterate that I did speak to Deputy Chief Mark Simmons, and I, and I did acknowledge the fact that I saw a, a firework go from the protesters to the RPD. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not denying otherwise, what I am saying is that the moment that happened, it turned into utter chaos with hundreds of people injured. So I'm asking about the, about how, what I would argue, the proportion, that the response has been disproportionate to the action, and I'm wondering how that actually is ascertained. If that's not a question you wanna answer right now, I will defer to my colleagues, might be able to answer it in different ways, but this is not about who started, who, who started what, or about asking for apologies. To me, it's trying to understand how we continue to have what happened on Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and not how we have what happened on Saturday and Friday.
Right, but it, it has been about who started what, Councilmember Gruber, that's what it has been about. And that's been the rhetoric.
I'd like to respond.
Uh, Councilmember Lupian, I'm gonna go to, uh, Vice President Lightfoot.
All right, all right, so, um, there's a couple of things happening, playing out here, ladies and gentlemen, and, and the fact of the matter is, we as council members, and as well as, as the people that are serving, uh, the people that we represent, we have a responsibility to do to, to get answers to questions from our constituency. Uh, it's not personal, it's not a personal attack, it's not a personal thing, it's just the information that we have to get for the people that we serve. I don't think there's been a, a more greater champion, if you will, uh, than myself for the police department. I've sat with you, many of you that are at that table, and, and you, you can attest to that, that I have supported you a hundred and fifty percent, uh, for whatever it is that is necessary for you guys to do your job. So to say that council's not supporting you, that's kinda, you know, that's, that's a little bit of a gut check for me, uh, because that's all I've done as Chairman of Public Safety, is to make sure that you guys have what you need to do your job. Um, but I have a job to do, and I'm, I'm elected by the citizens of this community, and I have a responsibility to answer their questions as well, and I have to do my job, just like you have to do your job, I have to do my job, and we have to do ours. And one of the questions that, 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 that is out there, and I'm not sure if it was already asked, just let me know, is there's this unlofting gathering that, that is often declared at these protests. The question is, why, why is the unlofting gathering declared? What, what causes that to be declared?
So unlawful gathering, with so undecided, when, when agitators of the crowds start to throw things, it is no longer a peaceful assembly. When, when, again, we'll re, keep, I'll continue to reiterate this, when rocks and bottles start to be thrown at police officers, or there is some sort of inciting that's going on to do such, that is when it becomes an unlawful assembly, and that is what is declared.
Okay, I got that, Chief, that's, that's good. Okay, who, who, who gets to make that determination? Who makes that call?
I made the determination every night when it was a hostile crowd.
Okay, thank you.
That's Joe, that's Joe Mordito.
I got you. Now, what, what's the potential punishment for an illegal gathering? What, what's that charge? What is that punishment? What is, what is that?
I believe it's a, I believe it's a, I believe it's a B misdemeanor.
Okay, thank you.
In the penal law, I believe- In the penal law, I believe we provided the penal law as well.
Okay, we're, we're, Councilmember Patterson?
I'll be brief. First of all, pretty tense time right now across the city. I'm going to thank the, the RPD for the efforts that you've engaged in to de-escalate and step back and allow folks to peacefully protest. But part of the challenge is that, and I think it does go to the nature of the, of police department being a paramilitary organization, is that in many instances, when you guys form up, it has an intimidating factor. Now, I think one of the things that you're missing in your intimidating stance is that in some cultures, backing down is a loss of faith, is a loss of face. So, I just, I just impurred you, and it looks like you've done it a bit, when you're forming...
What's your phone?
It's not my phone, not my phone.
No, it's Chief's phone in that, I don't know, in that conference room.
So, when you're forming...
Thank you.
Keep in mind that your formation is going to provoke a response in some people. As far as the unlawful assembly, my concern is that what I observed was a bunch of kids who were singing and dancing. There were some fools throwing some things, and, 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 you know, there's no way to get around that. But part of the concern and the issue is, your response, I would not say is indiscriminate, but it's unfocused. So, there might be someone who's acting inappropriately, unless someone in the crowd checks that person, your response is to the entire crowd. And then you have folks who are sitting there like, "Well, look, man, I didn't do nothing," and, you know, either we'll, we'll say, maybe there's a ricochet, hell of a ricochet with some of those items, that ends up hitting people. And in some, for some of these days we had there, your response to provocation heightened the response of the crowd. You've changed your behavior, it's appreciated. And, you know, and, and so in the end, look, that unlawful assembly, I see that you haven't been doing it as much. That's a good thing, because quite honestly, in a town, in a downtown that's largely deserted after 8:00, we should be able to openly let our, our community come in and express their displeasure when an item was happened. And I see that you're doing that, you know, and, and, you know, so there, there, I had a tremendous concern with how you were approaching this community earlier. You've made positive changes, and you've, and it's just my hope that you'll continue to move in the direction that you want me to.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Patterson. You know, I have been one that have come to the table and will talk to anybody with regard to people in this community, and I think people in this community know that. And our, every night, we look at the response the night before in consultation with many people. To your point about backing down, last Thursday, we did that, and I'll let Field Commander, the Field Commander, who was at the time Deputy Chief Mark Simmons, speak to that.
So, on, on last Thursday, I was serving as incident commander, and I was in constant communication with the mayor, keeping her up to date that things were going on, and we were strategizing about ways that we could try to de-escalate, because ultimately, our number one priority is to allow people to peacefully assemble and peacefully protest. One of the suggestions that came out of the conversation was, okay, can we go back inside the building, with hopes that that would de-escalate the crowd? We, I then directed our officers to move away from the line, move away from the gates, and go back into the building. Once our officers went back into the building, the protesters did not take that as a sign of de-escalation, but instead, some, not all the protesters, I want to make that very clear, the vast majority of the protesters are there peacefully. But some of the protesters decided, this was the time, the officers are going back in, to knock down the gates, go and make their way past the parking lot, and they were moving closer and closer to the building, to the point where I had to ask the officers to come back outside of the building. So, we are, to the chief's point, trying things because the message, you know, regardless of the message, our job is not to determine the validity of that. And as a black man, as you can imagine, I have my pains and stronger pains about the fact that black lives matter, and I make no shame or no bones about that. I'm a proud black man, and I solely believe black lives matter, but right is right and wrong is wrong. And we have tried to de-escalate, and not every time that has happened, but in past days it has, and I appreciate the people in the crowd that are working hard to make that happen. I appreciate our officers for showing restraint and making that happen, and I have the full faith and confidence that will continue to happen in the days to come.
Thank you, thank you all, Chief, Deputy Chief, my council colleagues. These are, these are extremely trying times, and I believe that we all are doing the best that we can to try and ensure that the city is safe and that the tremendous issues that are in front of us get addressed with, with no harm and certainly no loss of life for anybody. So, I want to say thank you for all who are working to that end. We won't be able to continue today, we've reached our 4:00 hour, and we'll have to begin our council committee hearings. Again, thank you all for being here.